Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a full house this evening. Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Scrubner?
Here.
Councilmember Poggin-Court?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Everyone present?
All right. Is Pastor Kyle Phillips here this evening for our invitations?
Yes.
Would you do the for us?
Yeah.
Could you please stand?
Let's all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to gather in a small town like this and discuss business that we need to take care of without any outside people telling us what we can or cannot do, Lord. We appreciate that freedom. And I ask that you would go with us this evening as we make important decisions and touch each and every one of us and be with the people in the audience so that we can have a productive meeting and do things that you approve of, Lord. We ask these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
By his blood.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Salute my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are marked with an asterisk, considered routine, non-controversial by staff. But if anyone in the audience or on the staff of the council would like something removed for a separate discussion before we take the vote, just say so. Does anyone in the audience like to see something from consent removed? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve consent as?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, as written.
All second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Poggin-Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrubner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to approve the consent agenda.
All right. We now have a couple of certificates or a certificate and swearing-in ceremony. I'm gonna come around this way, I think. Watch out for the yellow cords. Officer Michael Christensen?
Mike, where'd you have him?
That's pretty cool. I like that.
Well, it gives me a great honor to present this certificate of recognition to you. The Tehachapi City Council and the Tehachapi Police Department would like to recognize and thank Michael Christian for the 15 years of service to the police, Tehachapi Police Department, and 25 years of service to the law enforcement profession. The Tehachapi City Council comments your dedication to our city and appreciates your impact on the Tehachapi Police Department. On behalf of the Tehachapi City Council and the Tehachapi Police Department and the entire city of Tehachapi, all its residents, congratulations on your retirement and we wish you the best in the future.
Congratulations, Mike. Mike's been with us for 15 years, and in that 15 years, he's kind of filled a lot of roles here. One of the biggest things that Mike did for me while I was here is he ran our Explorer Program for a number of years. I've got explorers here, former explorers here that worked for me now that were under Mike's tutelage when he ran our Explorer Program. So we've got a lot of kids that have come up through that Explorer Program and gone on to be successful police officers. So Mike's always been one of my range instructors, field training officer, done a lot of things for us, and we really appreciate everything he's done. And he's done all this while being a member of our community as well, and that's really important. So congratulations, Mike. Wish you best of luck. He's got his mother with him back here somewhere. All right. Do you want to say anything or no?
I just want to thank everybody at the department and the city and citizens of Tehachapi. Thank you for the adventure.
Awesome. All right. Congratulations, Mike. Now, Chief, do you want to come back up? Do you have a couple of folks to introduce?
Absolutely.
We have one of the two that are here this evening?
Yes. Yes, we got two new sergeants here. We're gonna swear them both in tonight. Sergeant Justin Rupert, come on up and bring up whoever you want to bring with you, Justin. And he's got his wife with him, so we're gonna do that. We've already done a previous swearing-in last week. This is kind of a ceremonious swearing-in. Justin comes to us from LA County Sheriff's Department with over 15 years of experience. I worked with his dad, Kim Rupert, down at Lancaster Station. So I also worked with Justin for a short period of time when I was down there. So a great guy. We're happy to have him, and his experience and knowledge is very welcome here.
Welcome to our community. Welcome to our police department. And I know you're gonna serve us well, you and your family.
All right. I just need you to raise your right hand and just say, "I do want." I, Justin Rupert, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. In a small town like ours, it's so neat to be able to welcome each officer in when they come on board. It's really nice.
More members of our community coming here and working in this great city. So Sergeant James Clark joined us last week. Unfortunately, he was unable to be here tonight because of a family emergency thing, but we'll catch him hopefully at the next meeting as well. And again, another community member joining us to work here.
Absolutely. Great. All right. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Thank you so much. Next item is audience oral communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the attention of the council that's not on our agenda this evening? Okay, seeing that. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So I thought it was actually very appropriate that Councilmember Wiggins talked about local control and prayer and how blessed we are to be able to manage our own affairs here in the city of Tehachapi. And then we have two new sergeants, even though one wasn't with us this evening and then one retiring. It's all about local control. It's about quality of life. It's about protecting our families and our assets. And so tonight, I'd like to talk to you about your consideration placing a measure on the November ballot for the 2022 general election to secure locally-controlled funding through a local sales tax initiative. Can you hear me okay? I've got this all messed up.
Yes. Yep.
So at the city of Tehachapi, we're planners. And what I mean by that is not just Jay's department, where we plan streets and roads, but council planners, staff for planners, everyone that lives in this city are planners. We're planning for our future every day. And at the city specifically, we plan for infrastructure, streets and roads, water, public safety, and financial, which is what I want to talk about. We have, as you know, our five-year budget, a rolling five-year budget. We've been hit hard recently by some state-funded, unfunded mandates, some increase in costs and different things that I'll go into a little later. But we need to start planning our future more precisely in the financial world than we ever have. We have forces that are working against us. And luckily, we have a strong budget. We know that. We've built our reserves. When I became city manager many years ago, one of my goals was to build our reserves. And we have millions in reserves, but we cannot spend those millions out of our savings account on day-to-day operations. It's not feasible. You wouldn't do it at your home, and we don't want to do it in the city of Tehachapi. So we have some looming challenges from federal, state, and county actions. Kern County actions, 202% increase in fire services. Now, they need to recover their costs. They need to be paid. And it costs money to provide public safety, streets and roads, potholes, whatever that happens to be. With the county of Kern, it's a non-negotiable full-cost recovery, $4.2 million at the end of our five-year journey. We continue to work on a more cost-effective business model for locally control. It's clearly the goal. We want local control. The state has effectively seized and reallocated over $6 million in local revenues. We learned that with our budget process a couple months ago. We talked about that in depth, some of it by reallocating redevelopment agency, or RDA, money that was lost to the city of Tehachapi. We used that money to revitalize downtown. We also used that money to, in part, revitalize Tucker or condition it so that we have a very healthy retail environment in the Tucker corridor. The state has used gimmicks in the past, like triple flip for tax money that comes to us, withholding gas tax money, SB 1, from local municipalities, and that is about $2 million once too. So we're talking about some significant money here. It's gonna take some time. This is gonna take a while to it. I don't want to just read this report. Of course, it's eight pages, and it's in your staff report, available to the public. But this is a very important issue that we really need to understand and digest. SB 1, Senate Bill 1, was sold to the voters as a road tax money. Only some of that is coming to the city of Tehachapi. Lots of paper is involved in that. Very tight restrictions on how we can use that money. So lots of promises from Sacramento, very little delivery when it comes to the actual process. They know how to deliver paper and not product. And you know I critique Sacramento a lot. Emission standards, things are going up. Of course, we want clean air, but we are required now to eliminate out of our public workforce tractors and things that don't meet emission standards. Perfectly good equipment. As a matter of fact, neighboring states just re-auction it, and they buy it from us. And they use it in Arizona and Nevada and Utah and such. It's really disheartening. We have a vicious site arrest and release cycle with our police department. We're seeing the same criminals over and over. Those people used to be in jail or in prison or in institutions. Now they're on the street. We have this revolving door of criminals. They're exhausting our resources. It takes money and time, and time away from other items that we might want to be looking at more closely. Some examples of state-imposed mandates or mismanagement of public funds. We talked about the dissolution of the redevelopment agency and the SB 1 money. I'll mention that with SB 1, sold to the voters as street and road money, promptly the state of California funded a local train up in the Frisco area and then a four-lane road in the Northern Valley, things that were not sold to the voters. That money's not coming to locals like it was sold to. Prop 1B, the voters approved that some time ago, the streets and roads, again, a bond. Highway 58 is a perfect example of that. I know, Mayor Smith, you've been working on this for years, and thank you for doing that. We need to continue chipping away, but that money, SB, I'm sorry, Prop 1B money is not being spent where it needs to be spent, at least locally. Prop 1A, this is where the cities in the state of California, so the state of California, remember, back in the recession, is having a serious budget problem. Cities that were managed well, had money in the bank, like Tehachapi, they did not send us our property tax revenue. They withheld that for three years because we had enough money in the bank to pay our bills. They withheld it and then paid us back in three years. How dare them keep that money? But they did because they're mismanaging the funds. So we're talking about local control, local control, local control, right? Can you imagine taking a loan from somebody? But it sounds like some Guido in the Bronx where he says, "I'm taking your money and I'll pay you back later." Luckily, they did. Some of the state actions with COVID. Now, COVID was real, of course. People lost their jobs, different things, businesses shut down, different things, but we lost sales tax revenue when it came to that. The state mandated sick leave, unpaid sick leave. So we, the city of Tehachapi, has to pay for employees that get COVID, even if they have sick time on the books. We have to give them more sick time on backfill. They don't backfill it, right? Hotel tax went down, different things like that. We talked about the emissions. There have been at least two water bonds that I'm aware of. So the voters were sold on water bonds to fix the state's water fund, right? The California aqueduct dams, that network. Lots of paper. No new water, no new storage. That was Prop 68 that I know of. Constrained enforcement of homeless issues has led to more administrative times. So we had to remember, months ago, we had to approve or update our ordinances. So that costs money as we interact with homeless. And we can do certain things, ask them certain questions, but they're part of that revolving door. SB 1383, which is the mandatory organics program. This is state-mandated. At the end of the day, there will be an increase to your trash costs every month, but right now, we're spending tons of money on just processing 1383. Water shut-off regulations with COVID, the city of Tehachapi was not allowed to, you didn't pay your bill, we could not shut your water off. We don't want to shut anybody's water off, but it takes money, revenue, to provide that service. We have to pump it, we have to store it, we have to provide all, test it, excuse me, all those things. And luckily, we have the reserves to be able to pay those bills, right? So those are some examples of state mismanagement that I wanted to share with you. The state is talking about two things that literally scare me to death. One is elimination of VLF, Vehicle License P, which is DNP. As you recall, in the budget process, that brings about $1.6 million into our coffers. We used that money for public safety, for streets and roads, those sorts of things. If VLF is eliminated, we will lose $1.6 additional million dollars. They're also talking about eliminating the ability for cities, like we're talking about tonight, potentially placing a ballot measure, ballots for the voters' consideration, eliminating our ability to even do this. Can you imagine? They're gonna constrain us and tell the city of Tehachapi and all cities up and down the state, if this passes, that we cannot, local control is gone forever. We're beholden to the state, so we're gonna have to hold our hand out, just like a socialist country, if you will. Thank God we have reserves. The state has mismanaged the public funds so badly. I could go on and on and on, but I wanted to give you a flavor or sprinkling of things that we're dealing with and managing. It's imperative that the city continue to be self-reliant and exercise as much local control as possible over our financial stability and the community's quality of life. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Cory. Cory's gonna talk about the public outreach. This process has been going on for a better part of a year, and I'll let Cory get into that. When Cory's done, we'll ask Kened to talk about our finances, and then it's gonna come back to me. So, Mr. Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So last summer, this was in the last budget cycle council. We touched on some of these challenges then. If you remember, we were in our last budget, recently adopted a month or so ago. You can see the balance and then the deficits start coming in the next few years. So it was last year when we first brought these to your attention and directed staff to basically go and explore options to increase our local control for many of our looming challenges. In August of 2021, when we started, we probably didn't think it would be so difficult with record inflation prompted by federal actions, but we remained dedicated to working with residents, addressing our local needs. So part of that was hiring a consultant to help understand the funding priority of the residents in the city of Tehachapi. We used two separate phone surveys and email surveys, both the first in August of 2021 and the second in July of this year. These are the results from the August of 2021 survey. Residents were asked about their funding priorities and their willingness to have local control through local funding options, not to be taken by the state or federal government. You can see some of the really extremely very important items that are categorized on the right-hand side. So obviously, maintaining fire protection, drinking water, preparing for natural disasters, maintaining local 911 emergency response, and it should not be lost. The fact that the city of Tehachapi, as a matter of fact, right over here is operating the only local 911 dispatch center in the entire area. Everybody else goes dark, or they send their calls to Bakersfield, CHP's Bishop. The only people that know where Tehachapi's at are in that room right next door when it comes to local dispatch. Preventing property crimes and a few other things. So that was the first survey done, and this was part of the consultant's work back in August. We also, in addition to these surveys, they were asked to participate in an online feedback poll, which listed the options you see up there on this poll. They were drinking water, maintaining fire protection, and again, preparing for natural disasters, maintaining 911 response, helping prevent crime, maintaining essential services, and helping maintain local businesses and jobs. As part of that, we sent out a pair of mailers to ask for resident feedback. This first one that you see on the screen, it's also in the agenda packet, went out in January, and we were addressing some of the challenges that we saw. We're also asking folks to participate in the mid-year budget process. We're getting close to going for mid-year revisions. And so it started with a Quicken, Oak and Greg on the front, and then we really wanted to make sure we were telling the whole story. We were showing our budget, we were showing our funding priorities, we were showing what things and services are being impacted by rising costs, whether it be fire contract, whether it be state mandates, the other bunch of mandates that we were having to pay for. So we really dove into that in there. We did do a brief snapshot of the fire contract and how it's gonna escalate over the next five years and where, how our general fund is broken up, what it spends on, and obviously all the services that are impacted by the general fund. So this was the first one that went out in January and with a link and encouraging people to fill out those surveys online, some frequently asked questions, how COVID impacted us, how the Sacramento takeaways impacted us. So all that stuff was sent out to residents and encouraging, asking them for their feedback. The second one went out in June. This was after the adoption of the budget. So we include, that's the front page on the right and the very back page on the left. They included sort of a five-year budget summary, which was enclosed on the back. It shows sort of the difference in the general fund with the current cost allocation to fire, what it looked like in '26, '27, that fiscal year. And on the inside, we really wanted to paint the picture and show some of the community feedback results. We wanted to let folks know, to see the significant increase in medical fire services we have, pointing out that what's some of the other impacts, services that could be impacted by that contract and other factors that are relating to rising costs. And then the very bottom was the five-year general fund budget projects and deficit to maintain services, so what that looks like. So we wanted, we make it really easy on our website for folks to go look at the budget, but we wanted to provide some takeaways, some quick snapshots, and we sent these to everybody in the city as well. So these were the two, and as a result, we were pushing these online feedbacks polls, surveys that were on our website too, and it has its own URL, which was loop up Tehachapi.com/feedback. And so these are the results of that poll, the first being the online poll. So this is what people filled out via the website or email, and you can see the top priority, they're maintaining fire protection. One and two was listed, so the top priority or the second highest priority, protecting drinking water was up there as well, got quite a few number-one votes, not as many for the second highest. And then preventing crime was up there as well, and then maintaining local 911 response for very well, especially on the second highest priority. So when it came to one thing that had the most sort of ones and twos, that was it. Before the latest survey, which is in that blue box, and this was the one that was done via phone call and also emails from a consultant, and the consensus was that exercising local control for the city was the most important thing. Whether that looked like helping prevent crime or maintaining fire protection or protecting drinking water, streets, roads, having that local control over those funds was the most important for those residents. So this was the result of the online surveys, and they went, I want to say, probably December, January, so we kept them for a good six months or so. We also had the opportunity on those surveys to hear from residents. We asked them in the survey, "Do you have any questions? Do you like anything answered? Do you have any concerns?" And so we had some of those via the feedback form. One lady on Cherry Lane asked about more opportunities for disabled adults and better work possibilities. Another was a pretty good question, actually, about relating to our equipment replacement in public works, especially due to the ever-changing diesel emission and air quality regulations. Someone asked, "Could a rental contract with local company work out better if you don't use it every day, if you could go pick it up?" And it wasn't a terrible idea, and we did chat about it, but it was mostly, it wasn't feasible because we need that thing, we need that thing, water line breaks, whatever. We don't have time to try to track down a rental. And so it's one of those standby pieces that we have to have. Someone asked about the steps to stop property crime, specifically to catalyze the converters. And we did sort of chat about the edging and painting the converters to make them one of those bits of events in the throughout the county to make them more easily identifiable. And I think the timing couldn't have been better, just days later, Chief Crager and his department actually had an urgent traffic stop, managed to arrest an individual in possession of catalytic converter theft tools, some converters. It was just minutes after the alleged crime occurred, so it was very good timing to see what, how seriously our police department takes a catalytic converter theft. Someone had a question about the impact of Walmart and about the sales tax, and he said, "I greatly reduce my shopping in Bakersfield and Palmville for items I do not get at Walmart," which I think a lot of us are the same. He makes a conscious effort to shop in town and not just at Walmart, so generating tax dollars here. We couldn't share the specifics because the numbers are confidential in terms of what the store generates, but we shared the empirical data, showing, look, we have a large amount of customers. We use some of our AI data to show how many more people are visiting that store that actually live in Tehachapi. So obviously, we're expanding our trade area because of Walmart. We talked about sales tax briefly. Someone did ask about Keeshawn Davis Street, asked about considering a plan for some sort of animal control services, proper shelter, place to help with pets. She commended how hard for the job they do, but some of the rescues can't keep up with the demand, and that was not something that I know we, the council's discussed in the past, not something to be prioritized at the top of the list, but something like that does require funding and requires local funding to do so. And then kind of expected, I wanted to include the bottom comment just because we went so, we really went in-depth with our mailers, and I figured someone would have this question, kind of putting two and two together, saying, "Well, if you're out of money, why are you sending..." Politically, they say, yeah, politically-based mailers are biased mailers. How complaining about the state government? The budget's so tight, you would be squandering on this useless spam mail. Fair enough in terms of it going out, but I think it was important to send it, and it wasn't politically biased, it was pretty much showing the reality of our budget situation and what Sacramento's done did not help that. And so I wanted to include that because it was legitimate feedback, but I think obviously they read through it and had an opinion about it, so that was important to point out. I think really the coup de grace of all comments we received, though, was this gentleman on Leah Lane, and he said, "Obviously, to keep Tehachapi the greatest city in Kern County, we have to raise taxes to pay for these services. I am basically conservative, but would fully support reasonable tax increase of sales, property, etc., to pay for this." We're not talking about property taxes at all, but I think this is one of those sort of really focusing on maintenance. We always have from the beginning, talked about maintaining what we have. We're not a community that always wants to build bigger and better, and we just want to be able to maintain this great quality of life we have, and that sentiment's been shared with a lot of our residents. And this one really summed it up. So the survey has allowed the residents to rank their priorities for funding, start conversations, we pointed out... conversations, we pointed out. And we also took these, these survey forms, we also took this, a couple of presentations on the road and engaged with community organizations and service clubs who presented with the reality of our budget position, the challenges, including the increase in fire protection and the cost to maintain the city of Tohatchee is a beautiful place to live and work. We spoke to the Greater Tohatchee Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Tohatchee Economic Development Council, Rotary Club, Association of Realtors, Tohatchee Senior Center, and several others that we were able to chat with about these looming challenges, and they sort of had the same response in terms of understanding. It was important to maintain what we have and exercise that local control. So it was a busy nine months or so of community outreach. We got a lot of good feedback, we had some good responses, both to our phone surveys, not ours, but our consultants' phone surveys and email surveys, as well as our public presentations, got some great questions from community members as we just sought to educate them about the reality of the situation that we're, we're facing. So the feedback resulted in a desire for local control and a frustration with a lot of Sacramento policies that are impacting our budget and the way, and the way we live here in Tohatchee. So that concludes the portion for the outreach, and Hammond Jones will take it from me.
All right, so when the fiscal year '22, '23 budget was adopted, it showed a balanced budget this fiscal year, but then operated deficits in the four years after. So the city has healthy reserves now, but those reserves will quickly get depleted when you see deficits of over $2 million. So when you see growing deficits of over $2 million annually in future years, then those reserves will get depleted. So the city needs additional revenue. The city's current sales tax rate is 7.25%. Most of that goes to the state. 1% out of that 7.25% comes to the city, to the general fund. That's about $4 million in revenue annually, and that goes, that's actually the largest source of revenue to the general fund, makes up about one-third of the general fund revenue. And that goes, you know, helps pay for police, fire, 911 dispatch, and other important services that the community needs. So through phone, email, and internet surveys that were done first in August of 2021, the results showed that 64% of likely voters will support a one cent addition to the sales tax. And then surveys were done again over the last month, and those results were held steady and showed 63% of likely voters support a one cent addition to the sales tax. Additional research shows that 80% of the sales tax generated in the city is generated from customers that live outside city limits. So they surround communities, they come, they dine, they shop, as well as travelers come, they bill up their gas, that generates sales tax. And so they also use our roads, our water, our sewer systems, and occasionally will need fire and police services. And so there's a good value to city residents by having the customers outside of city limits pay this additional sales tax, because that's additional money that goes to the general fund and can go towards paying for these vital services. The additional one cent sales tax increase will generate another $4 million annually, and that would help satisfy these funding priorities that have been laid out from the community. In order for the city to maintain these services and have balanced budgets in the future, it's imperative that this measure pass.
Thank you, Emmett, and Corey. Want to talk a little bit about local control measures in Kern County and around our region. So Lancaster and Palmdale, they teed up, that was actually a great idea, because I'll remind the council, should you choose to put this on the ballot and should the voters approve it, that entire 1% unbiased will come to the city of Tohatchee. In today's dollars, that's about $4 million. So that entire 1%, it won't be divvied up between the county and the state and other agencies. 100% of the 1% comes to the city of Tohatchee. So Lancaster and Palmdale, they approved measure A V, and they raised their sales tax to 10.25, which is the state allowed maximum. We're at 7.25, which is the state allowed minimum. Okay? Bakersfield, they adopted measure N in 2018, raising their tax 8.25. They've done an outstanding job, in my opinion. They're, they're collecting millions of dollars and they're putting it back into the community, into public safety and other projects that they promised the voters, and so they're an example of how to do it right. Not that Lancaster, Palmdale are not, they just, they're recently collecting those funds and continuing along. The city of Taft adopted back in 2021 in a special election, they declared a fiscal emergency. That's not something anybody ever wants to get into, but they declared a fiscal emergency and adopted measure A, increasing their sales tax to 8.25, mostly in part because of the challenges with Kern County Fire and being able to pay, pay those bills. The county of Kern supervisors recently approved placing a 1% sales tax on the increase on the unincorporated areas of Kern. Now I want to be really clear, this is not 1% on top of 1%. The unincorporated areas of Kern County will be voting on their own whether or not they want to raise their sales tax from 7.25 to 8.25, just as we're requesting tonight. So they're on their own journey. So if you're a resident of Golden Hills, Alpine, Stallion, Bear Valley, you know, Rexel Makers, wherever in Kern County, Boron, Mahavi, you have your own decision to make. This is a city-only decision. It is not 1% on top of 1%. 100% of this money will be coming to our coffees, as I mentioned before, not to be confiscated by the state or the federal government. Corey talked about the polling and different things. 63% of the respondents were very likely to vote yes on a measure if the vote were to happen today. Those are good numbers, those are really good numbers. That means that the public trusts us, we're honest, we deliver product, we have a clean, safe city. And we want to keep it that way. We don't want to go the way of Taft. No offense to Taft, but with a fiscal emergency, that's very, very problematic for them. Let's not, let's not get down, go down that road. We don't want to be reliant on others, we want to be self-reliant. Talked a little bit earlier about the state of California's discussions in Sacramento about limiting our ability to even talk about and/or put this on the ballot. If that were to happen, we're beholden to them forever. That's not what we want. The need for additional revenue has been discussed for some time, from time to time, but really world events, county events, and city events have made it. We've got to the point where it, we must address this, and we must address it now. A yes vote by the city council tonight, and a yes vote by the voters in, in November, should, should you choose to adopt it this, this evening, means fire protection. We will continue our partnership with Kern County Fire, or look at other options. Mary Smith and Councilmember Davies are on a subcommittee, but we're looking at different fire protection laws. Not to say that we're going to go away from Kern County at all anytime soon. We, we appreciate their partnership, but we are about local control, and let's make sure that we retain that as we move forward. Prevention of crime, the city of Tohatchee has one of the lowest, if not the lowest, crime rate in Kern County. We want to keep it that way. We want to continue to recruit, like you saw this evening, talented individuals that can help us lead us into the next year, five, 10, 50 years, right? We're planning for this long-term, term for future. Corey talked about 911. Our dispatchers are right across the hallway here. They're the only ones literally that know our city, and quite frankly, know the entire community. And we want to keep it that way. We don't want to be calling Bakersfield or Bishop if we can help it, if you have a true emergency. Protecting drinking water, we've got a lot of projects going on, partners with Golden Hills, Tohatchee coming to working with them about our water basin, our groundwater supply project, GSP, other things that are happening. These things take revenue to continue to plan for the future. Road maintenance, Don Marsh, our Public Works Director, has an exhaustive matrix of every single street and road in the city of Tohatchee, and the condition of that street and road. If we continue to lose money year over year, not, not gain our S P one money and certain things, you'll remember we took $350,000 out of our budget this year for road maintenance. We don't want that infrastructure to deteriorate. We want, we want more money in that budget so we can maintain our streets and roads. Those are just a few examples. A vote no this evening and/or by the voters in November would mean, fire protection options would be severely limited. We have to pay the bills. We can't, Kern County is not going to offer fire protection for free, nor is any other agency, nor can we do it for free internally. So maybe some cuts to other departments so that we can pay our first and foremost obligations. Crime prevention may be impacted. We talk a lot, and we love our police department and the men and women of this department. We may not fill positions, that, positions may go unfilled. We want to compensate our staff appropriately because it's a very competitive environment. We may have fewer officers on the street that can help with, with crime. Streets and roads maintenance, we talked about that a little bit earlier. Can't say enough about our public works and what they've done to create this matrix and this policy and procedures that, that have really brought our streets and roads and even alleys, we're bringing that asset up, we're bringing it back to life. The city's general fund, we're talking about general fund money here, not enterprise money, not water, not sewer, not transit, this is a general fund discussion. The general fund subsidizes several things, landscaping and lighting districts. About $350,000 goes towards LLDs, right? The, the nice grass, flowers, trees, those sorts of things in certain neighborhoods. The Tohatchee Municipal Airport, it runs in the rent every year, and we have some grants with the FAA right now, drainage improvements, taxiway and runway improvements. If we can't meet the demands of the matching component, we may have to abandon the airport grant projects, right? We want to continue to, to improve our assets. And it could possibly impact how we deal with our businesses in town. You remember during COVID, he and Corey led an initiative where we were enhancing and helping small businesses. We had a big coming out party on Green Street, right? Those sorts of things make Tohatchee special. Our communications platform that, that Mr. Budge manages, the residents of the city and beyond all know who we are, what we're doing, why we do it, when we do it. That takes revenue to do that. We don't want people to be, to be in the dark. Again, 100% of this revenue, if, if you approve tonight and the, and the voters approve it in November, would come to the city, an estimated additional $4 million in revenue. So I hope we have captured everything for you this evening. Appreciate your time. I would be willing, obviously, to answer any questions the council or the audience asks for this evening. Thank you.
So at this time, we would like anyone in the audience with questions and comments to come to the podium and just give us an idea if you're a city resident.
May I?
I'm sorry?
We do have a couple of people that turn in speaker cards first.
Okay, we'll let those who turn in a speaker card come up first, and then we'll, everyone else in line.
Okay, we have Ken Kingston, City of Tohatchee.
Good evening. Good to see you.
Mary Smith, it's good to see you and City Council. I am here tonight to speak in favor of putting this measure on the ballot. I have, we moved to Tohatchee in 1986. We relocated a business up here and moved all of our employees up here because this was the community where we wanted to raise our family and relocate our business to. I've served on the planning commission for more years than I want to count, lived two different times, thanks to the city council, and I served on the city council for five years. And while I was on the city council, I saw the work that was done on the budgeting. I want to commend the city and all of the department heads and the councils for all the work that they do to bring a balanced budget every year. Our police department, our fire department, our roads, our 911, we have invested a lot of money as a city in all of this, and I would hate to see any cuts come to it over a 1% increase. The fact that that 1% will come completely to the city is huge, and it sounds like after the presentation that if we don't do it now, we may not have the opportunity to do it again in the future. I know that the city will do a lot should you choose to put it on the ballot, to promote it, but I would like to encourage every one of the council members, you have a responsibility to the people who voted you into these seats, to go to your district to educate the voters. The vote is going to be important, it's mid-year, midterm elections, and we know that the voter turnout is not huge during midterms normally, but I think the residents, if they understand, will support this completely. We're all struggling financially with COVID and inflation and everything that's going on, but I think that we can all reach a little deeper in our pockets to keep Tohatchee the community that we love and that we want to live in and raise our families in. And we see that every day with people moving into this community because of that. Working at the visitor's center, I see people coming in and talking about how wonderful the downtown area is, how beautiful this community is, how much pride we take in the place that we live. And I think that 1% will continue to show that pride and not have any department cuts. So with that, I would encourage you to vote to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Pierce, with the Greater Tohatchee Economic Development Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Pierce, I am the president of the Greater Tohatchee Economic Development Council, and I'm here to speak in favor of allowing the voters to go ahead and vote on this ballot. It's a very important initiative. Public safety and public infrastructure are increasingly important as we look at economic vitality. We look at other communities where they haven't focused on public safety and that public infrastructure, and we're seeing large chain restaurants, other businesses, and corporations that are closing and shuttering, and then it's also hurting the economic vitality of that community because they don't have these large employers that are there. And the reason they don't is because public safety has suffered, so now people don't feel safe coming to work. People don't feel safe coming into these restaurants and shops to buy and have commerce, which will greatly affect the community as a whole. So on behalf of the board of the Greater Tohatchee Economic Development Council and as the president, we ask the city council to approve this tonight and to let the voters make that decision and have a really informed decision and conversation with the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't have any more cards, but I think I saw Madison Sanchez-Benham.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is a question to City Manager Garrett. Okay, accordance to self-reliance. Okay, back to the DMV statement that you opposed, okay? Why do we not have a physical or local location for the DMV? Okay? What is the purpose? And please clarify.
So we have worked with the state of California to encourage the state and the Department of Water and Vehicles to place an office in the city or in the region, and repeatedly we've been told no because of budget cuts, and so many items can be done online these days.
Okay.
So no office in the city of Tohatchee. Others, why the Harvard and Ridge Press and Bakersfield locally. Others, like Arden, Ridge Press, and Bakersfield locally, and they encourage you to work through the website.
Okay, and also on the other note, risk versus reward. Okay, I've watched you and hopefully one day will become a City Council member, hopefully. But risk versus reward. Nowadays, you know, Tehachapi citizens, you know, some of us, you know, a good portion are on a fixed income, okay? We can't go over budget, we can't pay any more than what we can. But I'm just going to be very, very honest, risk versus reward. We need to keep our town safe. I've seen a lot, and I mean a lot of increase in homelessness because of COVID. I've seen a lot of death. I've seen the lack of respondents because we are short on law enforcement, and I feel unsafe sometimes. I work in the retail industry, okay? I'm a cashier at Walmart. Nowadays, people have asked me constantly, why do we close the registers at 8:30 PM? There's a lack of law enforcement because we cannot, or they cannot, the city cannot respond to certain issues because of this, you know, lack of funding, okay? But that's just my honest opinion, okay? I'm a very concerned Tehachapi citizen about public safety and law enforcement, law enforcement respondents, okay? So I just want this initiative, this one cent initiative, to go towards public safety. That is my one single plea for the public of Tehachapi and my question for local DMV people who need to register their vehicles, get identification cards, real IDs, et cetera, et cetera. So that is my only, my only question, my only statement, and thank you, thank you very much for hearing me out.
We appreciate your comments. Yes. Anyone else want to just come up and chat? Because this is a very, very important step we're taking. How many cities in the state are at 7.25%? Very few.
Very few. It's the state minimum, and I might add that we've been doing more with less, quite frankly. Kudos to the council, to the staff, and to all the citizens because we read the state minimum. I would guess that there are very few. Most have been increasing rates to, I gave you 10.25. It's a 3% gap, that's large.
Well, we're not going to come anywhere close to that, but we are asking for the citizens to make that choice. And would you respond to the crime rate issue that Madison posed? Very, that's a concern, but we'd like to address that right now.
So Tehachapi Police Department is on Walmart security, that's for sure. And I do know that the state of California has, once again, created a situation where it is allowable to steal up to cheaper than $900, $900, and you can just walk out the door with that, walk out with your cart full as long as it's less than $900. It's ridiculous. And so Walmart and big retailers, Home Depot, others, many others, they struggle with this. And the criminals know that. We do spend a lot of time at Walmart, as a matter of fact, and if this initiative were to pass, then we could continue, you know, those crime fighting techniques, if you will. We're closely with our security department without elaborating too much. But if the initiative does not pass, then we would, quite frankly, have to cut back. We would not be at Walmart or any other stores, large, medium, or small, as often as we are helping them maintain their strong businesses.
Thank you. Comments from the council? Christina?
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and thank you to everyone who had comments today and their support for this one cent sales tax to present for the voters' consideration. The council's sacred duty and highest priority in my mind is to respond to the taxpayers' need for public safety and infrastructure. At its bare bones, that is what we rely on government for. And our city does not have dozens and dozens of departments that do lots of work and lots of different types of services to provide to taxpayers. It is the very basic essential services that we deliver that the community counts on us for. And I think that a very strong case has been made tonight, that we have done our due diligence and we have found efficiencies within our budget. We have shared our budget in a transparent fashion to the voters to scrutinize and consider what their opinion is on it. And we have gotten to a point now where we are one of the lowest in the state at the low, at the minimum of what we can charge in our tax, and we have spent a lot of time finding out how deeply we can cut our own budget. I think it's really important that we understand we are going to pay a cost here, period. The cost will be one cent sales tax that will be shouldered by to the degree of 80%. Thank you to our finance director for pointing out that what we are doing is cultivating, continuing to maintain the beautiful community that we have cultivated to this point, and we are allowing those who come to enjoy our community to help share in the responsibility to keep it safe. They're coming here to shop, they're coming here to stay, they're coming here to work, and their investment in our community is helping to sustain our lifestyle, our way of life. This is not a pretentious community that has an overly sophisticated expectation. This is a community that is full of wonderful wholesome families that want to raise their children in a safe and clean and healthy environment, and that is what we are after. And that is going to be compromised. There will be a cost, whether it is through the one cent sales tax or whether it is through cuts that I believe will deter our commitment to the community to be able to deliver the essential services that they're counting on the city government to provide. I don't want to belabor the points that have been brought up today, but I think it is important to really understand the context of this question that we're posing to voters. I believe we are asking for a very modest increase that will stay 100% with our local, demonstrably conservative and transparent government entity providing essential services. I think that is something that we can reasonably understand and digest, is critically important. And if that were not enough, the fact that this is perhaps our last opportunity to do what we are committed to doing in providing basic services, because once again, the state of California and their infinite wisdom has decided that perhaps we should not have local control. And that's a theme that I think many of us are concerned about. So I would like to just urge us to consider bringing this forward for a vote of the people to decide what kind of government they would like to have.
Thank you, Christine. Michael?
I agree with Christina 100% wholeheartedly and everything that's been said by your speakers tonight. When I got involved with the City Council, and one of the things that was brought to my mind is budgets. We really, that's what you're going to be responsible for. That's going to be your number one priority as a city councilman, is budgets. Spending your money as well as mine and my wife's, let's make sure we get that clear. But this has been, I have been studying this and looking at everything, and I go to Lancaster, I go to Palmdale, I go to these other communities and I see what, I don't want to live like that. I don't want to be in those situations, or I'd move there. I don't want to live there. I want to live here. Being in law enforcement myself as a volunteer, I see it. I see the wear and tear on our officers. I see the officers in our town, in our communities. We need to support them. We need to support our neighbors. We have a beautiful town, and I don't want to see that go down. I mean, we have to, a penny, you know, one cent is far shamed from what could happen if we don't approve this. So as a city councilman and the mayor pro tem, I am all for it. And I'm going to be talking through November, I'm going to be talking to my neighbors and my friends and telling them about this so that we need to be proactive and tell our neighbors and friends on November when it comes to voting that we will have a say in what happens to our communities. I don't want Sacramento, they can't even take care of their stuff up there. I don't want them here. If it was up to me, I'd move Tehachapi out of here. Unfortunately, I can't do that. But we have to be proactive in everything that we do, and we have to be the leader of the mountain. We've got to be what people look up to in our area. I hear so many positive things about people, from people when they come to our communities, you go to shopping, you go to parks, and everybody wants to move up here. That's great. I just think we have such a gem up here on the mountain, and we just need to keep control.
Thank you. Susan? Diddle, diddle, diddle.
Yeah, not much left, everybody.
You got something else?
I want to point out that our police department does things that a lot of us don't think about, such as the school resource officer contract, which I think is on our agenda tonight, that we've already approved on consent. We wouldn't be able to do that. We used to be able to write grants and the school district could just pay for it all. It's not like that anymore, and we try and do what we can to put officers on our campuses. And in 2022, that's a very important thing, have an officer close. I also have worked in personnel for school districts, and I've heard the union people come and, you know, sit across the table and tell me how these are just idle threats. Well, this is not an idle threat. And they learned that one, I had to lay them off because they didn't want to do it, you know, settle on what we wanted to settle on. It's not us against the people, it's not the man against all of you guys at all. I live here, I own a house, I have to pay taxes, and the threat's real. And I'm so thankful that I live in a community where no one has said defund the police, you know, let's go for anarchy. We haven't heard any of that. We don't want to start hearing any of that. But it's not just for our police department, and to be able to have a good fire department, we have to maintain things. Believe it or not, I get phone calls from people who say, there's a big old hole in my alley. I said, I'm sure there is, I'm really sorry, and we'll probably then put some more dirt in it because it's not paved. And that's the best we can do right now. We can barely maintain our roads. And when people yell at me because of, oh, you let all this extra traffic in here because of, you know, all this growth that you've had, I actually told a friend of mine I was going to lunch with, when he started complaining, he lived here since 1940 something, and I told him to go back home on Cobbavis Mountain and stay there and quit complaining to me because growth brings money, and I'm sorry, but it really does. So I'm all in favor of this.
I'll catch you just in a second here.
Amen to everything everybody said. I won't bore you with anything else, but my big concern, and I know you said this several times, Greg, is that the state will come in and tamper with our 1%. And that's my biggest fear. That's the only concern I have.
The way the laws are made today, the 100% of the 1% that would come to the city of Tehachapi direct without passing, going to go.
That's what she said, but I.
Good evening. State your name, please, and if you have another question or a question.
I'd like to comment about the police.
Yes.
I made a huge mistake. I was at Pride recently, and there's a man who assaulted someone. At the time, I thought the police weren't there for us, because I'm a, I am pansexual. And I was like, the police aren't there for us. But then I realized, because I've had a bad history with the police and everything, I'm autistic, I have other mental things, and I realized, just because I've had bad experiences with authorities and police, doesn't mean all of them are bad. You know, I've had, the police officer, they're there for you, you know? If they weren't there for us, they wouldn't have even shown up to the guy who assaulted someone. And a couple days ago, I was walking to a place where my friend was working, and it was really hot. I was by a toy store where I live, and an officer pulled by, he was in line, he pulled by and he asked, hey, are you okay? I said, yeah, thank you. And I guess I learned, hey, not all officers are bad. They are here for us, and that's what I learned. I had bad experiences, but that doesn't change the fact, well, it means basically I just misjudged something over something that happened to me years ago. And so I'm just grateful we have police that are there for us, and they go through a lot of things, like people say, oh, defund police. Well, they're there for us. They put bad guys in jail. They make this, they make this city safe, and they really care about us. And I just want to say that I am grateful every single day that, you know, I'm alive and safe from police and everything. So I'm autistic, I'm trying to like say things properly, so, you know, I'm just really grateful for the authorities.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else have something? Come on.
I do.
Yes, your name?
My name is Connor Harris, and I kind of used this in a letter to the editor a couple months ago, but a good campaign slogan for what you're going for here with this ballot initiative is don't Los Angeles, might Tehachapi.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nathaniel Harbison, owner operator of Castle Rock Homes. I'm a project manager and a real estate agent, and I've had the honor of representing a lot of people who've moved to this area to get out of crime ridden places. So harden my fiduciary responsibility is not only to get them into a viable home, but continue with that protection down the line. So we're 100% backing this, continuing to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Back again.
That's absolutely right, yes.
Okay, I grew up in Tehachapi, since birth, basically. I'm a full-on Tehachapi native, okay? I have seen the ups and downs of Tehachapi for the last 24 years, okay? This one, this council by far has done the greatest work I have ever seen, okay? I've seen stores being redeveloped. This building, okay, for example, this wasn't in use for 10 to 15 years of my lifetime, okay? I wouldn't be standing in here if this council or other members would be here, you know, or would want to create something like this, you know, so the community could come together, be together, you know, work together. I feel very sad nowadays because of these states' grip on our throats. The way this has happened, okay? The decrease in funding, the taking away of our money, you know, the things that we need to be stable, okay, they're not, they're not being given to us or properly handed to us. Like our officer right over there, I've met him several times, he probably doesn't remember me. But it just, I know that we are limited. We've been limited for a very, very long time, okay? It has been a three, four, maybe five year limit because of the pandemic, okay? Everything has happened for a reason, okay? But as I continue, okay, part of the issue that I feel that Tehachapi has had was respondents, law enforcement respondents. I live right around the corner, I live right behind this building, actually. I am a District Four resident of Califor, of the city of Tehachapi. Because the law enforcement and why I backed the initiative up so much is due to the fact that it takes them because they're spread so thinly, because they're, you know, over there parked across the street from the current transit, or they're trying to monitor traffic, you know, things that the highway patrol should be doing, in my opinion, you know? I don't know everything. I'm still going to college to finish up my criminal justice degree, to probably go to law school soon, hopefully. But it just, I feel like if everybody, including City Council, law enforcement, the fire department... But it just, I feel like if everybody, including city council, law enforcement, the fire department, everybody came together, including the Tehachapi community, I think we could get this done. Because we don't want to be like other places, I don't want to be like other places. I even love this town so much, I got a tattoo, you know, to represent Tehachapi, okay? This is my town, okay? I don't want to leave here, I don't want to live anywhere else, I don't want to move to a different state, I don't, I just don't. I've been here for 24 years, I'm used to it, I love it, okay? Residents, especially young residents who have moved here, I implore them to get active as much as they possibly can in the Tehachapi community, as much as possible. You know, work at your local elections office, we need people to work for local elections to get a greater understanding of this community and the policies that we pass. Sorry if I'm, you know, yeah, I'm going. I also encourage local volunteering, you know, Salvation Army, other things, you know, that get young people involved in the community, including our local stores, you know? I also encourage that, my sister at one point was wanting to be a police officer, but she discovered a different route, and she's now almost, she's taking her exams to be a registered nurse. But she had to leave, she had to leave because there wasn't enough funding and job opportunities at the time for her to stay in Tehachapi. But I am a big enforcer of this one cent clause, okay? Big enforcer, because I work as a cashier. Never in a million years have I thought, okay, that we would have to close down the registers, because I've had so many complaints, even people coming up to me, arguing with me about store policies. Part of it is because we can't automatically call law enforcement or local law enforcement, because we're going to be spread too thin. We can't have a police officer in the store 24/7, you know? And I just, I wanted to make that statement, you know? I want, I want everybody to know, public safety is the number-one issue in Tehachapi.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Well, I believe you actually mirror what was in our surveys that were sent out, the priorities were, you know, public safety, fire, 911, our police department, and did down the list, our drinking water, those kinds of things. But you're not alone in your thoughts that people want to be safe here, this is a safe community. We have one of the lowest crime rates in the state, at least in current county, very low crime rate, and that hasn't happened by accident. You mentioned this building, this police department. The city has funded major projects like our sewer treatment plant, things like that. We would take loans from ourselves versus, at times, we've had bond measures, but for the most part, for this building here, we borrowed from another account and paid ourselves back versus paying a bank for a loan. So we've been very good at our finances for keeping our dollars in-house, using our own money, using our own checking account to pay our bills. And by doing that, we've been able to survive the ups and downs with COVID, other things, when the economy tanked in 2008, we stayed above it all, but because of good and sound financial practices. But you reach a point, and you're squeezed, everybody's so tight, every department is running very tight, you can tip it over in just, you know, just a year or two. I mentioned that we have healthy reserves, but over a five-year period, when the fire department is going to charge us 200% more over a period of time in five years, instead of being just a little over a million, it's going to be over 4 million?
2.2.
2.2, in addition to what we already have in our taxes to put on there. So that's a huge increase, that would just wipe out our savings, that would wipe out our reserves. Now what do you do? And we may not in the future be able to do something like this, so this is the time to do it. But I remember this building here, we couldn't have done it unless we had those reserves and we did it in-house. I worked in this building when I was growing up, I took care of after the, it was a garment factory, all right? It employed many, many people, it was called Spencer of California. But we were able to acquire the building and repurpose it instead of spending and borrowing on the open market from a bank, 8 million or whatever it was going to cost, we did it for a fraction of that, repurposing this building and making it what it is today. I think we did a pretty good job. But so the thing is, we're in sound position now, but that could change in a heartbeat just with certain financial constraints put on us from Sacramento that are out of our control. Fire country contract is not negotiable. We've already, I've been to meetings, and it's, this is what it is, that's why Taft had to go to an emergency session and pass their sales tax, just to stay afloat. We would prefer not to just stay afloat, we want to always be, you know, in a position where our savings are intact. If we have an emergency, it's there for us. And this money is for keeping what we have, we're not going to go build a brand-new city hall, maybe in the future if people wanted to do that and got behind it, that's not what this is about. This is about the items that were listed, public safety being the top priority, so, and we're asking a penny. A one-cent sales tax brings us to 8.25%, which is still below many cities around us. So that's, and the DMV, I've been on here for a long time, we begged and pleaded for a DMV office here, you know, I'm not sure what we could do to get them here, you know? But anyway, Lake Isabella has one. You know, we're probably one of the only communities that doesn't have one, and a nice library, current kind of library would be nice, too. That's, you know, we're not going there, we're just trying to keep what we have functioning well, keep it functioning well.
We have a beautiful library. But yes, on the DMV.
You know, that is true, we do have it. The converted reused Sonic Sonic Temple, yes.
Downtown on Gray Street.
Yes. Thank you for correcting me. It's still so many years we were trying to get one. I guess I go on sometimes. Anyone else want to chime back in?
Thank you for, thank you for your response.
Register to vote.
Yes.
Yes. And this is something that the city of Tehachapi cannot promote. We cannot do this correctly, if you would.
Well, you cannot spend taxpayer dollars on promoting this initiative. The five of you can, and it sounds like you're going to vote to put this on the ballot, so I would ask you to please talk to the constituents, talk to the citizens, inform them, educate them, and ask them to vote yes?
Yes.
Bottom line, but we will not be spending taxpayer dollars on encouraging a yes or no vote, we're here to inform you and educate you on the facts.
Okay. I think that's all comments, so do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Paul's second.
And so roll call, if you would read the motion as presented.
Will do. Councilor Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schriever?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt a resolution approving ordinance for the submission to qualified electors of the city of Tehachapi, a measure known as the City of Tehachapi Local Control Essential Services Measure, which would approve a local one-cent or 1% transactions and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and ordering the submittal of set ordinance to the voters at the general municipal election to be held on November 8, 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, and thank you for correcting me, Christine. You know, that was another good reuse of funds by the campaign, you know, that building, because it was...
Cool, too.
All right. Item number seven, disbursements of bills for RSI Petroleum.
Mr. Mayor, I need to refuse myself, because I'm currently an employee of RSI Petroleum.
All right. All right. This is for disbursements of bills for RSI Petroleum, is there anyone in the audience who would like to raise a question or discuss? Anyone on the council? Do I have a motion to prove this? Is that a roll call, please?
So, second. Councilor Wiggins?
Yes.
Sorry.
We're good.
Councilwoman Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schriever?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the disbursements of bills for RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Proton Davies.
All right. All right. Item number 10.
Good evening, Jay.
Good evening. Mayor Smith, councilmembers, I have several items for you tonight. The first is the Walmart Warranty Project. Shall I provide my staff report?
Yes.
Okay. I should have pulled it up. Sorry about that. All right. So this is a somewhat unique capital project. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to award the project to the responsive low bidder of R.C. Becker &amp; Son. Following the completion of the Walmart project, we, which is our standard practice, at 11 months after any project, private development that constructs public improvements, we do an inspection of those because the standard in the industry is a one-year warranty for all construction-related work. And we developed the list of items that need to be repaired under the auspices of the permit for Walmart, and we provided that list to Walmart, this was several years ago. What ensued was a period of time in which we were attempting to get Walmart to perform that work, and varying changes in contractors, and ultimately a significant shift in the responsive person from Walmart, they simply didn't respond and perform the work. And so simultaneous to that, as the council will recall, you entered into a reimbursement agreement with Walmart years ago, prior to the construction, that had them construct some improvements on our behalf with us reimbursing them for those expenses. And since the warranty work never came together, nor did the payment of those reimbursements to Walmart. So city staff began the process of figuring out how to get these repairs completed, and worked with the legal team that represented Walmart, and basically developed a plan to simply utilize those unreimbursed funds for the city to perform the construction-related work. And we did receive permission from them to do that, and so staff undertook the hiring of AECOM to prepare draft documents to make those improvements, and we circulated those bids. They prepared and solicited those bids, bids were opened on July 7th, the results of the bids are included. We received one bid from R.C. Becker for $194,000. In compliance with the Public Contract Code, our AECOM undertook a review of those bids and confirmed that the apparent low bidder was a responsive bidder. And so as a fiscal impact, awarding this contract to R.C. Becker should be no additional expense to the city, we'll simply perform the work and then keep the money out of the reimbursement that we don't spend, and then return whatever is unspent to Walmart at that time. And so with that, there's no net fiscal impact to the city attach fee resulting from this action. And so I therefore recommend that you award the Walmart Warranty Project work, or I'm sorry, work, project, to R.C. Becker &amp; Son Incorporated in the amount of $194,090, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to the maximum of 10% of the construction cost for $19,400. So, a little complicated, but happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions from the public? From the council? Do you have any examples of some of the warranty?
Yeah, the easiest one to see is if you come in off of Tehachapi Boulevard to the old Tucker Road signalized intersection there, which is right next to where Big Papa's is.
Yes.
There's a crushed storm drain inlet, so down at the street level, the curb that's right there where you have a drop inlet for stormwater to go into, is somebody hit it shortly after it was built and crushed the lid, that's, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 to repair something of that nature. There's also a number of missing signs, so there's 15 different items in different places, but that's probably the easiest example of something they should have come out to repair promptly, but we just could not get the communication to line up, they're a big corporation. And then again, I think what really did it was their project manager retired. And so then I'm adrift in the sea of the largest retailer in the world, trying to find a replacement, and anyway, so we think this is a good solution.
All right, then. Do I have a motion on staff's recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Paul's second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schriever?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to award the Walmart Warranty Work Project to R.C. Becker &amp; Son Inc. in the amount of $194,090, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the construction cost.
Thank you. Item number 11?
Very good. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, the second item tonight is a quick claim easement deed in favor of the State of California Department of Transportation relating to the industrial Parkway drainage sump. So Caltrans has purchased approximately five acres of land in the form of three parcels on industrial Parkway, which is immediately east of Tractor Supply, immediately west of the Tehachapi Airport. And so they've purchased that in order to construct a new maintenance yard. So this is a good thing for our region, that new maintenance yard should enhance their ability to provide maintenance of 202 and 58 in particular, and it also, I think importantly, adds emergency resources to the area. This is the kind of facility that, you know, if it really, something serious happens in this area, Caltrans will be joining, will all be joining forces to deal with that type of emergency. So those three lots, there's a picture here, there's a drainage sump that's located, they purchased the three lots that are 16, 17, and 18, they're immediately east of the airport. And then immediately north of that is a drainage sump that is owned in easement, not in fee, meaning we don't own the land, the city doesn't, does not own the land, but the underlying property owner owns it, but we have an easement over the top of it that makes it a drainage sump and nothing else. And that services those industrial lots in that area, that sump provides stormwater control. It's also strategically located between where the maintenance station will be and Highway 58. So again, in case of a major emergency, Caltrans was interested in the idea of having control of that property so that they could make emergency access to Highway 58. And so we talked about relinquishing that easement to Caltrans. Who's a bona fide agency and manages storm sumps all over the state knows how to handle that business. And so we worked through a process with them, utilizing the city attorney's assistance to generate the attached quick claim easement deed. The purpose of that deed will be for us to relinquish our control of that easement. Simultaneous to that, Caltrans is actually purchasing the land underneath the sump that actually should have closed by today, according to what they told me, they were in escrow to purchase it. So they'll own it both in easement and in fee when it's done, but by us, it's given to the public in general, so by us releasing it, they can then take hold of it and become the responsible agency. So in so doing, though, we had several conditions that we asked them to meet, which they agreed to put into that agreement. The first is that the land must be maintained in a manner that allows it to continue in its use for drainage control, because there are other properties in the area. They're going to make modifications to the sump, but they're going to continue to utilize it for drainage purposes. Caltrans is accepting it as is and indemnifying us in case some unforeseen, something happens, we're not aware of any reason to be concerned, but that's the standard legal provision. And then Caltrans may not convey that easement to another party without our permission. So we needed to make sure we're protecting the rights of the other property owners for stormwater control in this area. So staff supports this action, Caltrans is experienced in handling this, and they have agreed to the form of the document that we have. So all that's left is my recommendation, and I ask that you approve and authorize the mayor to sign the quick claim easement deed to the state of California for the industrial Parkway drainage sump previously dedicated to the city of Tehachapi with parcel map number 10997.
Thank you, Jay. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Council? Do you have a motion?
I have someone.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schriever?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a 5-0 vote to approve the quick claim easement deed to the state of California as presented.
Thank you.
Item number 12. Go ahead, Jay, to serve. My final item is a resolution adopting a proposed project list for the California State of Good Repair Program fiscal year 2223. So we spoke earlier about Senate Bill 1, or SV1, which is the Road Repair and Counting Billy Act of 2017, that part of the creation of that was several subcategories of money. One is called the State of Good Repair Program, or SGR. That's a subcategory of that bill that orients dollars towards transit... that part of the creation of that was several subcategories of money. One is called the State of Good Repair Program, or SGR. That's a subcategory of that bill that, that orients dollars towards transit-related activities specifically. So under that program, the city of Tohatchee is eligible to receive some funding to improve transit service. It is, we are automatically apportioned money every single year, although we have to have a project identified to do that. And since we don't have a major transit, you know, service here in the city of Tohatchee are relatively limited, it's always a bit of a trick for us to figure out. Not to mention, as a small agency, as you'll see, we're eligible for a grand total of $9,516 this year. But we are able to combine it with other SGR funds in previous years. And so we were able, we had previously identified over $100,000 of SGR money that we were going to route to the ATP, the rail corridor project that we completed. But we completed that under budget, and we're allowed to reallocate where the SGR funds are going to go. So we are proposing that, that we combine this money, perhaps with money in the coming years. Well, we're gathering up the money that we need, to make an improvement immediately adjacent to our transit center. So this photo is rotated. Tohatchee Boulevard is the up-and-down road. The transit center there is on the top side of the page. And so we do have a section of missing sidewalk immediately to the, it's to the west, but to the west of the transit center, between the J&amp;H Auto Facility Repair Yard and the transit center. So, we're proposing that we save up the SGR money and we make the proposed improvements, because you are allowed to make improvements within one-quarter mile of a transit center with the SGR funds. So we thought this was a good project for the amount of money that we have. And so, we'd like to take the $9,000 we have this year and combine it with other available SGR funds. And so right now, all you're doing, we're not asking you to authorize the project at this point, but we are asking that you identify the project and allocate the funds from this year to that project. And so we ask that you adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Tohatchee, adopting a proposed project list for the California State of Good Repair Program fiscal year 2223. So we'll, if you approve this, we'll be reporting to the state our intent to use the money for this purpose.
Perfect. Any public comment? Council comment? Be a good use of the funds.
We think.
Do you have a motion? I'll make that motion, mayor.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schriever?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Thank you. City managers' report continued.
Nothing to see there, thank you.
All right. Council member reports. John, anything for us?
Just, I noticed some repair on Cherry Lane. It's a little inconvenient, but you can sneak through there after 5 o'clock, which I've done, and that's a good thing. And also, the allocation of money for the park over there at Old Valley Foods. That's exciting, so I can't wait to see that happen. So, we'll see.
Susan?
Nope, not tonight.
Michael?
No, it's, I live right there off Cherry Lane, and I haven't had any problem, because I leave before they get there and I pick up one after they leave. So, I haven't seen any construction at all. Is there really construction going on there?
There is.
No disruption to your, none of my, yeah. Christine?[1768.74]